I now call the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two Finance Committee meeting to order at six forty-five. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of claims.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the claims in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven and twenty-nine cents. And the Elon credit card in the amount of five thousand ninety-three dollars, seventy-seven cents. Payroll and liabilities, four ten seven twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. For a total of five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything additional we need to discuss tonight?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we adjourn at six forty-six.
I now call the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two Regular Session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Councilwoman Salisbury will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Borders will give us any location.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. We ask your guidance as we work through together in our efforts to do what's best for our community. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions that are right for our citizens. We ask that you watch over our police and first responders who protect and serve every day. Thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsey Cox.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare that we have a quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Cox has a motion. Councilwoman Borders has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Communication from the citizens. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on another item may speak now. I wish that those individuals, I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time if they would approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to ask if
Greg, could you identify yourself for the television audience?
I'm sorry, I'm Greg Talibus. I'm a resident here in town. And I'm talking on behalf of the Riverton Community Watch. And we would like to have permission to hand out candy here along with the city on Halloween for the children. If that would be okay, that'd be great. And then, I'd like to introduce a really special person who has actually already started and well organized a section in town that they're doing their own neighborhood watch. And her name's Lily, and I'd like her to come up and talk to everybody and tell you guys what she's got going on.
Hi, my name is Lily Ryder. I'm a citizen. I was asked to come here and speak with you just about getting a movement going, which has been a natural for us. Every time we move, we meet our neighbors. We make sure they're taken care of. And we've done that here. And then it came to my attention that there's a group. And so we joined the group. We get together, we watch out for each other. And if something happens, we're there for each other. We are also going to be hosting a neighborhood get-together. We're hoping to do that this month. And we would like the mayor and the chief of police to be present.
Be glad to come.
Thank you.
Give us a heads up so we can get it on our schedules, wouldn't you?
Absolutely. How much time do you need?
At least a year. Whatever works for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Greg? Is everybody okay if he passes out candy? Staff all right with that? Are you going to dress up in a costume?
I am in costume.
Perfect.
We'll make a sign, get a sign and a table and we're just going in with the good health and fun for our children.
Is everybody okay with that? You've got our permission. Thanks for doing it.
Will you have some signs there for people too?
Oh yes, we'll have some signs and we'll have a sign along with a card table, something like that. I guess, who do I check with to see where the city's going to have to give up candy so that I can get all of it?
We need you on mic, just for the home audience.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we'd like to set up close to, right beside where the city's going to be giving candy to. And we'll get some, a sign and some signs for parents when they're there too, for our Community Watch program.
Super.
I'm going to keep chairing.
Yep.
Okay? So, I was going to step away because I wanted to start a hot soup thing for people that are homeless. But I'm only going to do that every other week, so I'm going to continue chairing the Community Watch.
Super, we need you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I checked with
Kristen or Kyle?
Okay.
Kyle's in charge and Kristen's really the one that pushes the buttons, so.
I'll be in contact so that I, we can set up in time with you guys.
Sounds great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening.
Your Honor, he can share our table if he would like to.
What's that, Chief?
He can share our table if he would like to.
Super. That's a good, that's a good table. It has four legs.
To me, it just makes sense to have us together. Absolutely. Bring down, it's absolutely. Another reason to come.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to address the council?
Mayor, Council. Name's Edison Brockie. I'm from Fort Wauske. And right now, I'm attending Job Corps as a student. I've been in the program for nearly a year now. And I've been in my trade for at least eight months. And I just want to say that it's been really a great opportunity to work with the city and Monti to replace the sidewalks that are on federal. That's what I have to say right now.
Appreciate that, we really do.
Hi, Mayor, city staff and the council. I'm Thomas Willis. I live in Rock Springs, Wyoming. I've been in the program for ten months and I'm about to graduate next month. And since we've been working on your guys' project for concrete, we've laid six and a half yards and we have three and a half to lay Thursday and Friday.
Fabulous.
And I wanted to say thank you guys for your time.
Like to thank you guys for what you do.
Congratulations.
Hey, guys, could you come up and shake the council's hand? We'd appreciate it. Thanks for your good work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All your hard work. Thank you, I saw you laying.
Congratulations. No Rose?
What's that?
Do you know Rose?
Oh, that's my mom.
That's what I thought, are really good friends, so congratulations.
Kyle has some pictures that we took that we'd like to run through real quick and explain to you what we asked to do. This is a project that has been a pet project of mine. About three years ago, I drove over one of these heat eaves on federal with a four-wheeler and high-centered down by the bridge. And they really are unsafe. And we tried really hard to get the state of Wyoming to fix those frost, those heat expansions and they didn't have time or the money. And I worked on the city and they were kind of like the state. And so we were able to make connections with Job Corps. And Job Corps was going to help us, but then COVID came along and we locked them in their rooms. And Job Corps was gonna help us, but then COVID came along and we locked them in their rooms. And so these, there's six of these on South Federal, starting at the Skaggs Salvage Yard and across the street at Hasko's. And then all the way down to the bridge. And they've replaced four of them with new concrete. They removed the old concrete in the two that they have left that they're gonna pour on Thursday and Friday. And that will replace all of the expansion heaves on South Federal. We have about 20, we have about 20 more throughout the city. Most of them are on Webbwood. And so...
Broadway.
Excuse me?
Yes, Your Honor, we have some on North Broadway.
North Broadway. I see one out on Adams. So they're, they're around town and they, they push up in the air, they raise up out of the ground and make it so you can't walk on those surfaces. So, this is the concrete laid. And Jobs, Job Corps stays mostly on their own site. And so it was kind of a special thing to get them to come down and help us. And we really do appreciate their work. And this will put South Federal back into, into use all the way. When we lost the RV dealership and Wind River, what is, is... River Internet. Wind River Internet took over. They were kind enough, they approached me and said, "What about that, that mess out on the sidewalk?" And I said, "Well, why don't you just take it out and that might push us to put it back in." So they were kind enough to pull out the concrete on this first one, but they just left it in the right, in the right of way. And so the Job Corps came down and with their equipment, they have, they have equipment operators that they trained there to take the concrete out. And they had carpenters that formed up the forms and then they laid the concrete. Six and a half yards is what's been laid there, so... And I even got, in the picture, that's my chat though, right there. Is that all of the pictures? Thanks, Kyle. I appreciate it. Thank you, job service. We appreciate what you do. Is there any, anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, October 4, 2022, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 4, 2022, executive session. Approval of the minutes, October 18, 2022, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for October 18, 2022. An approval of the municipal court report for the month of September 2022.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor, the finance committee met earlier this evening and approved the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $359,167.29. Elon credit card in the amount of $5,093.77. Payroll and liabilities for October 7, 2022 in the amount of $216,437.34. For a total of $580,698.40.
Thank you. I would like to note that this includes a Job Corps, or excuse me, this includes a Kifaru payment that we, that we offered to Kifaru to move to town. It's not the full amount, but it's everything to date. And that is, that's an amount of $75,631. And that will be, Mia went to work on this and got it taken care of and Kyle helped with that. And we appreciate that, that amount being processed and that will go out tomorrow to Kifaru. So, thank you, too. Appreciate it. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Lindsey, was that you?
That's Carla.
Carla, thank you. Councilwoman Borders has a motion. Councilman Bailey has a second. Any council discussion? And I'll abstain from any Bailey Enterprises items. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Wyoming Off-Road Racers Association Ice Race Event, City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Wyoming Off-Road Racers Association contacted city staff a couple of weeks ago about the opportunity to do ice races in town this upcoming winter. The city of Riverton owns a parcel of land that's actually in the unincorporated area of Fremont County. It's just at the end of East Monroe. The address is 2851 East Monroe. And that location with the map is in your packet. The parcel's 38 acres in size and has several ponds. And the ponds are the result of previous mining activities. The association contacted us with interest in racing on those ponds. The last few years, they've held their ice racing events at Boyson Reservoir. And while they're very popular, they feel that they might have a little bit more success in town. The races resemble those that were part of the Wild West Winter Carnival years ago. They're very popular. They have a few reasons for doing it in town. First, they think the ponds will be a little bit more stable and they'll freeze sooner in the year. Second, they're more accessible for the local spectators and local public to participate. And then third, as they bring these races into town and hold them throughout the winter, hopefully we'll see increased patronage at our stores and commercial centers throughout town as well. In order to grant approval for the association to use these ponds, staff prepared a memorandum of understanding for the city and the Off-Roaders Association to enter. The MOU is basic to other MOUs that we've done. Basically, we're granting them authorization to use the property. We do require that they follow good practices for the health, safety and welfare of the public and their participants. They do have liability insurance, that they indemnify the city for any potential issues. And then we put in there that they need to just coordinate the schedule of their events with city staff so that if there are any conflicts, we can help coordinate those and support them. That they need to maintain the property while they're there, you know, police for trash. We're more than happy as city staff to put dumpsters out and help them with that during events. And then we put in there that the city can make its equipment available if they need it to perform maintenance on that property if they give us enough advance notice and it works for our, our resources. What comes to mind is if we have significant snows and they want to have a race down there, but it's hard to park a vehicle or drive down there, we can get a grader or a loader or something to move the snow for them. Outside of that, the MOU is pretty standard as far as boilerplate language. We recommend that the city council execute this MOU and allow the association to use the property for the ice racing events. We do have in the audience Jared Jardine and one of his colleagues. I apologize, I don't remember his name. And then we have Helen Wilson. And we appreciate Jared being here. He drove all the way from Casper tonight to be here in attendance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would you, anybody want to address the council? Super. Just how fast are you gonna go? Would you? Thank you. Appreciate you doing it. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between the city of Riverton and the Wyoming Off-Road Racers Association, authorizing the use of the ponds located at 2581 East Monroe Avenue for ice racing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has a motion. Councilman Bailey has a second. Any discussion? Any idea how thick that ice gets?
Depends on what day it is.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for the City Hall Rooftop Unit, RTU-1 Replacement. City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you is the bid award for the rooftop unit, which is basically a heating, ventilation and air conditioning unit for City Hall. There are seven units that help support the HVAC system for City Hall. This is the largest one. It's 28 years old and has recently had significant maintenance issues. In fact, several times throughout the last year, the unit has gone down and required some investment in bringing it back online. As staff proposed its budget for fiscal year '23, this was brought up as a potential project. The city council did allow for this capital expenditure in this upcoming budget, the one that we are in currently. The proposed amount for the budget was $200,000. And just one more note, as I mentioned, this is one of seven units. This is the largest unit and it covers the majority of the facility. So it heats the common areas and really handles the lion's share of the work for HVAC system here at City Hall. Staff prepared specifications and bid documents for this rooftop unit. And pursuant to statutory requirements, a request for proposal was advertised three times in the Riverton Ranger. There were seven contractors that attended a mandatory pre-bid meeting. And then two bids were received by the deadline for the public opening, and that was on September 22nd. The two were Sheet Metal Specialties and they submitted a bid in the amount of $277,200. And then Summit Sheet Metal submitted a bid in the amount of $380,000. Staff did review the bids for responsiveness to bid specifications and also requested legal review. The budget impact for this award is more than what was budgeted as referenced. Staff anticipated a $200,000 expense here. In order to recommend award for this project, staff has reviewed several ways to ensure that we cover this overage. Specifically, we've gone through our capital budget and our existing line items to see if there's a way to absorb this cost without asking the council to allocate from its cash reserve. And I'm happy to report that we've been successful in those efforts and I commend Mia Harris and Randy Watson and Mike Miller for those efforts. We were able to discover that $55,433 from the general fund capital budget were able to be realized in savings from bids that have already been bid and then other projects that won't be bid this year. Additionally, $31,900 of supplemental funding that was planned for use in the airport capital fund will not be utilized because we are gonna use a different revenue source. Consequently, we do have the funds necessary to award this project despite the overage outside of our budget. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Kyle. The Chair would entertain a motion to award the City Hall Rooftop Units, the RTU's number one replacement project, to Sheet Metals Specialties of Casper, Wyoming, in the amount of $277,200.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Bailey has a motion. Councilwoman Borders has a second. I tried to make the guys from Specialty Metal Services, you guys are out of Cheyenne, right? So, if we approve this, you have to move to Casper. Will that be our... These are, this is Simons. Okay. My mistake. I appreciate that. That's the next one. So you guys can stay in Cheyenne, right?
Why would you have them move to Casper instead of Riverton?
Perfect. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for the taxiway rehabilitation, City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I get into that, I failed to mention that Mr. Agelson was also very critical in reviewing the line items and worthy that I mentioned that he worked on that, too.
Why is there such a large disparity in price? Are they essentially the same units?
Your Honor, I don't have a good answer to that question. What I can say is that we reviewed each of the submitted proposals and they both complied with what we required. And one company felt that that was the appropriate price for them and the other felt that it was the appropriate price for the other. We didn't necessarily find a significant reason in that regard.
I was just curious because, you know, a lot of times they're pretty close. I was just curious if one was bedazzled or something because it's just, it's a pretty significant difference. Well, I mean, in looking at heat exchangers, different models do different things. And I was just curious if it was a settling based on price or if there's some significant difference between them.
Your Honor, that's, that's tough to speak for the bidding entities, but I can say that the same information was provided during the pre-bid meeting and also in the bid packet.
I apologize for, for jumping discussion. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Thanks, Dean, for backing me up there. So we'll move on to, if we're caught up where we...
We are.
We'll move on to bid award for the Airport Taxiway Rehabilitation. City Administrators' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pavements associated with taxiways A, C1 and D at Central Wyoming Regional Airport are reaching the end of their useful life. They have a PCI rating, a pavement condition index ranging from about 30 and below. There are some sections that are 40, but essentially the pavement condition is at the age where we do need to address them. Thankfully, we do have federal and state grants that will support this project and we were able to apply for those grants in fiscal year '20. The design does include a full depth and partial depth reclamation of about 5,000 linear feet of taxiway A. And that's located between taxiway A2 and A4. I do expect you to remember these. And then the rehabilitation of D, and that's between taxiway A and runway 10, 2A. The project also includes the relocation of a wind cone that was identified in our recent FAA inspection as being non-standard. And they were requiring that the airport move it, and so we put it into this project as well. After the design was completed on the 21st of December 2021, the city council adopted two resolutions supporting the application of further grants to support this project. JAviation, the airport's consulting firm, prepared bid specification and documents of this rehabilitation project. They were advertised in several mediums and were done on three different occasions. We did have a public opening on August 16, 2022. We had two bidders respond to our notification. The first was Simon Construction and they submitted a price for Schedule 1, which includes the pavement work in the amount of $6,664,180. For Schedule 2, which was the wind cone relocation, in the amount of $48,790. For a total submitted bid price of $6,712,717. Second bid came in from Century Companies for Schedule 1 in the amount of $8,349,962.50. For Schedule 2, $81,500. And for a total bid amount of $8,431,462.50. JAviation did review the bids for responsiveness and detached in your packet is their letter of recommendation for award. The lowest responsible bidder for the project is $2 million above the engineer's estimate and over our budget. In order to cover this overage, staff has worked with the FAA and the state to increase previously, previously requested grant amounts necessary to complete the project. Staff has also worked on our internal budget to assure we can match our required amount to these grants. The table included in your packet shows how the project will be funded and this will include the construction portion and the project management portion. City of Riverton's share is $88,857. YDOT will support with a grant of $133,284. We will be using federal AIP grants, that's Airport Improvement Program grants, to the tune of $2,332,118. We also have available to us discretionary funds from the Federal Aviation Administration. And as reported previously, we were the only airport in the state to receive these. And that's in the amount of $3,571,111. We also are allocating some monies from the bipartisan infrastructure law to help cover this overage, and that's in tune of $1 million. Total combined project, including what you're awarding tonight and then also the project management with JAviation, is $7,125,370. Fiscal year '23, it was adopted to utilize $31,900. Fiscal year 23, it was adopted to utilize $31,973 to support our requirement for this project. The difference, obviously, that I reported was $88,857 that we'll need to come up with. Proceeds from a recent sale of property are sufficient to cover the city's match for this. That recent sale of property was $104,244. Therefore, staff is proposing that we forego the use of supplemental funding that was proposed to be used to match these grants and instead use the revenue from our sale of property. If the council would rather use the sale of property revenue for something else, there's still an option to utilize revenue generated from the passenger facility charge account that the city has to support its share of this taxiway project. Basically, staff is confident that we can cover our required match through the grants that are supporting this project. With that, Simon Construction is in the audience. We appreciate them traveling to be here to support this award and we also appreciate their investment in this project. As you remember, we bid this project in the spring and received no bids. And as we worked with interested contractors, the state and the FAA, it was determined the reason we didn't receive bids was because of the timeframe to construct the project. So we extended the timeframe to include next construction season, but we bid it now so we could secure our grants. And then also the contractor should, would be able to line it out in their lead of work. Your Honor, we do recommend that this project be awarded in the amount that was referenced. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to award Schedule 1 and Schedule 2 of the Taxiway A, C1, and D Rehabilitation Project for Simon Construction in the amount of $6,712,970.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Pronto and a second from Councilman Bailey. Discussion. So in reference to the land sales that we're using, we've had six sales, I do believe, and they excess, they're in the excess of about $350,000. We have another one pending. And so this is a good use of those funds, in my opinion, and we have to use them up there at the airport. Is that not correct? So I think that's a better choice to go back and use those instead of supplemental. So I would encourage that to be done. So I think that's a good idea. Any other questions?
I guess it always just amazes me that we can do a $7.1 million project and the City of Riverton's portion is 88,000. And I think we get a pretty good bang for our buck for that, so.
And that came from the sale of property?
Yeah.
And so that's a good thing that we were pushing that to get that done and get that usage out. So I think this is all roses, in my opinion, so. Even if you guys have to move from Cheyenne to Casper.
Why wouldn't you have them move to Riverton?
Why not Riverton? Yeah. If there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That concludes our agenda and we'll go on to reports and comments. City Council report and Council Roundtable. Mike, we've been missing you. You want to tell us what you know?
Well, I guess I apologize for being gone most of this last month. It was sort of conference and convention season in my business. And so I was at several different meetings and gone, and so I apologize. I have not attended any other meetings. I think the Force Committee meeting this month was canceled. Again, I think they're just sort of finishing up the season construction-wise and stuff, and so. Sunset looks amazing. It's nice to see it paved and striped and going. They were in there cutting out for the manhole lids and stuff today, but it really turned out very nice, so. I know it was a long, drawn-out project and they found all kinds of treasures that they didn't know we had. And, but it all comes out eventually, so. Thank you. That's about all I have.
We've had some questions about how the bike lane's working. Do they go both ways in the one lane or is there going to be another one on the other side or?
Mike knows all the first.
I've had so many people like say, why are you guys, why isn't there a bike lane on both sides?
Your Honor, this is a great question. There wasn't enough width on that roadway to put it on both sides, so it is only supported on the?
I told them they could go both ways on the one side.
Yeah.
Is that true? They said it's better than what bicycles had before, so don't complain. That's been my answer.
Maybe we should ask the chief.
Which way do you go on the bike with the traffic?
Well, Your Honor, they should be going against traffic.
So this, what we did here is I asked Kyle the exact day that we put the paint on, why we put that lane in there. And this is kind of an experiment to see if this works or doesn't work. And so we had the width to put it on and bikes are becoming quite popular again. And so Kyle and I were kind of hoping that we'd wear it off with traffic, but we'll have to wait till we do that, so. For now, we have a bike lane there and when it's unoccupied, you are welcome to drive in that section. And when it is occupied, we'd appreciate you not running over any bikes.
Your Honor.
Good answer. You can go either way. Depends on how brave you are.
I'm just a little curious and you may not have an answer, but the intersection, bike lane disappears. We have turning lane, going straight lane. It's kind of strange.
Well, the reason that that happens is the bike can go anywhere it wants on the lane change, right?
Maybe the second is also.
So they'd be treated like traffic, like a car in the lanes. Okay.
And we're getting some bike users that are actually doing 30 miles an hour, so they're not holding traffic. They're in front of traffic. So this is, this is kind of an experiment of what we can do and can't do. And hopefully it works well and we secure people on their bikes a little bit better.
Hey, Your Honor, when they do approach the intersection, we want them to comply with the four-way stop. And so having them come into where they're supposed to go, whether it's through or turning, that would be appropriate and then they can get back in the bike lane.
Perfect.
Your Honor, just so you know, bicyclists are supposed to adhere to all traffic regulations.
That is good information.
So they go with traffic then?
Well, they go against it. That's the only problem. They go against it.
They do.
But they're supposed to yield to auto traffic?
They're supposed to stop at stop signs, stop at stoplights and abide by all traffic rules.
Just today, I was parked at Federal and Main and a scooter, the light was green to turn from Main onto Federal to the north lane, Federal North. And cars were doing that and this scooter came right through the intersection at high speed. And it would have been really easy to hit that young man and he never even attempted to slow down.
You got his license plate. I can do something about that.
My eyes aren't that good as you can tell. Maybe we can chase him down. Especially if he gets hit, we'll be able to get his name.
Yeah, that's true.
Any other questions? Dean?
I was just looking at the rules on bike safety. I was always taught to ride with, but apparently I've been doing it wrong all these years. I haven't attended any meetings since our last city council meeting. But I was going to mention too, on the airport project, we have a really nice airport. And it's a lot of money to keep that sucker maintained, but in the end, it's a safe place. It's well-marked and lit and it's a great airport to fly in and out of. I've been into some sketchy airports before where the weeds are about equal with the wing. And our airport is just really an amazing place.
Thanks. It's nice to hear from a pilot, how good it is. Kyle?
The only meeting that I attended was the solid waste meeting on Monday yesterday. Yeah, it's been a long day. And I like to say that I made the board. Right? So we have a representative there. And the bad news is 2029, Lander will be closing down, but 2028 through there, there'll be a transition period where our transfer station will be gone and we'll be taking garbage direct to Sandraw. We bought three buildings, one for Dubois, one for Lander, and one for Sandraw. And the cost for the three buildings was $688,500. And they're just scale houses. And they put out six bids and one came back. So when, when poor Kyle puts out a bid of six and he gets two, I don't know what's happening, but the contractors are not responding. Anyway, so.
So Kyle, how did you know the cost of the three buildings and what were the six bidders bidding? Were they building on the buildings?
The buildings, just the buildings, just the buildings. Not the foundations, not the electrical, not putting them up, just deliver at the sites.
So you had six bidders?
Six bidders.
For three buildings?
For three buildings and one bidder qualified. And they put that out. That was the third time they've done it, put it out and, and they get no bids. First time, first two, we got zero bids. Anyway, so.
And those buildings are supposed to be located in, give me those locations, would you?
Location was Dubois, Lander, because Lander will be shut down. They'll have a transfer station similar to what Riverton has. And Riverton's transfer station will be Sandraw. That's where we will be, that's where our garbage will go direct.
So where's the third building? Dubois, Lander, and?
And Sandraw.
Sandraw, okay.
And, and the reason that we have Sandraw operating and Lander still operating and why they're trucking is we would have to duplicate the personnel and equipment to operate both at the same time. So Sandraw really is at a minimal and Lander is working on filling up. And that, that free space is what you call, is a measurement by surveyors determining where they are to a potential elevation which will be full. So that varies by the amount. So 2029 is the estimated date, but remember, that was supposed to close by edict, no matter what, 2024. So that's nice, though. Anyway, that's all I have, Your Honor.
So that, that could change still?
Oh, sure. It could go to 2001. In 2017, it was predicted 2036.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lindsay?
I haven't attended any meetings since our last meeting. Our senior endowment meeting will be November 10th. And I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Carla?
Your Honor, I was able to attend the PAWS, the PAWS meeting tonight, just prior to this meeting. And I did have a few things I wanted to bring back. They're always looking for volunteers to do projects, fundraisers and things like that. So for anyone that might be interested, they can call Lisa LaVoy. And I have her phone number here. Should I get that out? I believe I have her permission, but.
Probably not. Cut. That was shaken.
How about if I share that with Kyle and they can call you?
Your Honor, that'd be fine. If she's giving you permission, this is just a public venue, so.
Okay, so I'll go ahead. It's 316-300-7100. They're going to be having an open house at the PAWS building on October 28th. They want you to come in your costumes. They've, they have treats that you could feed the dogs and the cats that are down there. They're also going to have people treats, so come in your costume. That'll give you some goodies. Let's see. And then the other thing is dog walkers. They're always looking for dog walkers to help. And if you go anytime on their days that they're open, Tuesday through Friday from 12 to 5, Saturday from 10 to 1, you do have to be 16. If you're under 16, you need to have a parent with you. But what a nice opportunity to spend some time with some of those pets and take them for a little walk. And, and I believe that's all I had.
Thank you. Kristi?
I attended the chamber meeting and I think the chamber is moving in a really good direction. We have Sam as our new director who's met with over 100 businesses and is doing a nice job on that. He has some skills in helping employers with recruitment for employees that might be added to the chamber packet in the future. And we also have been getting our committees set up with chairs of the committees to start making it more of a working group. So we're excited about that. And also on November 5th, the college, the chamber, the city is all doing the Arts in Action, the Quick Draw event. It was really fun last year. All of local artists will have their products there for people to purchase. It's free. It's from 5 to 7 on November 5th at the Central Wyoming College Art Gallery. So stop in. It went really well last year.
Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you, Your Honor. We would like to invite the public to our Halloween trunk or treat and we're happy to have the Community Watch participate in that. That will be on Monday and just, you're going to have to remind, what time are we starting that at? 4:00 PM. We invite the public to come and that's always a fun event for the community to participate in. We will have Airport Board this Friday at 8:00 AM. And it will not be here at the council chambers as is the norm. It will be at the terminal building in what was the airport cafe. So the public is invited to attend that. That's 8:00 AM this upcoming Friday. In regard to the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District, I've been in contact with Andy Frye and have asked him to come and present to the council as they've been going through some strategic planning and some of the things that Councilwoman Larson brought up. And he said that he is willing to do that. He's going to look at his calendar. But Mr. Frye will come and speak to you about some of these changes that are proposed as part of their strategic, excuse me, strategic plan for the future. And lastly, Your Honor, I just want to give kudos to our Public Works Department, our collection and distribution crews for their hard work on Saturday. We did have quite a large water break on 6 by the Smokehouse. Mr. Aggleson can provide more information if you have questions, but I do want to say thank you for their responsiveness. I'm sure their feet were wet for at least three days after that. And we know it's never convenient for our customers when those water breaks occur. We try our best to get out and repair them as fast as possible to get people back in water, so I want to say thank you to our crews.
I sent you a picture on that.
Yeah, you did.
Did you? And you maybe can't find that, but it was in one of those with the Job Corps.
Your Honor, I could show that if you'd like.
Sure.
Your Honor, may I say something real quick? So I was wrong. I apologize.
Okay.
Apparently, the state statute and city ordinance says that foot traffic, so if you're walking, it's against traffic. If it's bicycle, you're with traffic.
Vindicated.
Wow.
Well, I apologize.
Wow.
So you just had to ride around in one direction and come back around on?
Walking, so you can jump right back away. See him coming?
Right back is a good idea. Yeah.
Your Honor, I appreciate the chief looking at it. I think that answers our question. It is a one.
It's a one way?
It's one way and you go with traffic on the north side of the road. Appreciate that clarification. Bethany probably could have told us.
So you can get there, but you?
That's who texted me, actually.
Why do you have to go a different road?
You can go, but you can't come back.
That will be hard to explain, so we'll have to get a sign printed.
No, let's talk.
So this water break, um, Ernie, could you knock the lights off? This water break, uh, started, uh, early Saturday morning and this pipe totally disintegrated, they could not find pieces of it. And it really, um, there's a large hole, but they worked feverish on it, I was there at eleven and they had it replaced around four. And so, um, kudos to our, to our water guys, they do a wonderful job. And that's that new, um, mini X with the thumb that you guys bought them.
Yes, it is. They love it.
They do, I love it, just looking at it, I wish it was mine. So we're fortunate to have that equipment and we're, and we're not even into the winter weather and, uh, that machine is hard at work and, and experts in it, so. Uh, I believe that's Dennis in the, in the driver's seat, so. No, Dennis got in after I took that picture, that's one, that's a gentleman with a, with a large beard, so. They were hard at work and, and it did heave the, quite a bit of asphalt. So they do have it barricaded now and it'll, it'll, if we're, we're warm enough still, maybe we can get a hot patch on it.
Yeah, we'll be patching tomorrow, your honor.
Perfect. We appreciate that, so really well done and, and a timely, timely job, so, thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
Do we know how old that pipe in that area is? Because all of that downtown is probably similar age.
Yeah, and it was, it was a bad break, it was just a, a single location and it had been patched over at least twice. So, um, the answer to that, I don't know, but I would guess into seventy years.
Your honor, I don't have that information, I do know Brendan Toman, our city engineer, is looking specifically at that line and working with Mr. Eggleston about future options, um, even with those that receive service from that line, but I don't have a date on that install.
One thing we do know is it's not wood like Rawlins has.
Well, that's lucky.
They're clay or?
I didn't.
It's a transit line, it's, uh, made of concrete and asbestos and it, uh.
It's a lined pipe.
It totally, well, it demolished almost six foot of line and there was, I think there was a chunk about this big that we were able to find of debris from that pipe, so.
So how do you splice new line into that? I mean, you don't have to get into it, it just seems like a challenge.
Put some, uh, clamps on both ends, cut it off square and put a piece PVC in between them.
Wow. Well, you do that enough times, you'll have a new line.
With lots of clamps.
That's the trick is where you stop, right?
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate those guys working, and they were working hard, so that's not an easy repair. And like I said, it just disintegrated that line, it wasn't just a single leak, so. Um, Kyle, were you done?
Yes, thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Um, on, on the fifth of last, of this month, the day after the last council, uh, I went up to look at the road conditions from the complaints that were brought to us on the fourth and, um, the roads were in pretty good condition, so the next day I grabbed Kyle and, um, we went up there and, um, we took a look at those. And, um, we stopped at all the businesses that we could find there and, and, um, they were, they were really glad to see us and then we left cards on the other buildings that we, we couldn't find. And I haven't had anybody call me back with those cards, but, um, everything looks good up there and, and I think we're in good shape. That, that doesn't seem to be a problem, so, um, from that meeting, I was, I was traveling with Kyle yesterday out to the fort and on the way back, I said, that was a good job that you did to get all of that, those weeds cut that were asked to be cut and the speed trailer moved and, uh, uh, police down in that neighborhood, I saw in, um, in the terrace, I saw five cars that got pulled over last week. And that was just from my driving through there. And so Kyle said, well, I didn't do that and, uh, so, Brian and, and chief, I appreciate you sitting in the meeting and taking notes, I was up busy looking at roads, Kyle was with me and so you did a great job to, to do that, get the trailer moved and, and, um, and so I don't know that anybody could ask for any faster service than what you gave there. And I do appreciate the, the oversight of the police in that area. We do have a traffic, um, problem on one of the s- the stop signs and I'll refer back to that two or three times here. Um, we're trying to think of something that we can do, we have a stop sign that gets, uh, run quite often there, so. Um, also, since we met, the Job Corps poured the, the second locations, there's, uh, four totally poured now and I appreciated them coming and, and talking to us about that. Uh, those individuals, those young people don't get off of the campus, they do all their studies on campus and it's kinda fun for them to, to get off and, and we're glad to have their help. And, uh, four done and two are ready to go and they'll do those Thursday and Friday. We also, um, when Kyle and I were out, we also took a look at All Nations Roads and we looked at Sunset Drive Roads and All Nations is the trailer court that is north of Riverton off of Smith's Road. They're talking about putting a speed bump in there and so, chief, would you keep, would you keep us advised of what you see there? And if you need that speed bump, we could, if you do that.
Absolutely.
There are some valley pans that are missing there and so there may be some things that we can do, but to be real truthful, when the city accepts a subdivision, they only accept the road maintenance. So all of the barge ditch and all of those other things that come along with that are part of the homeowners association. And, um, that's the best I've seen All Nations look in all the time I've been driving through All Nations, so. Um, it could look better, but it looks pretty good. On, um, on Friday, two weeks ago, I, I had the opportunity to work with, with Mike Miller, um, our community development director, who said Mike could not be here tonight, did anybody give him permission? I did, I did appreciate the work he did, it was a lot on a late Friday afternoon and, and we went and looked at a zoning problem and I appreciated his help, so that was, that was nice to have. I also got to go to the football game, um, a little one-sided there at times, so, but it was nice to see the, the young men play in that activity. On the eighth, Saturday, I got a co- phone call from a citizen about the parking lot at the high school, they were having a car show and they were making some noise. And, uh, Mike and I went and talked to that individual, uh, about a month ago. And, um, and she was gonna get us a petition from the neighbors and she hasn't done that. But, um, we had a long conversation of, of what that entailed and, and we'll see if we can't help her further with that. We also had a ribbon cutting for the three oh seven thrift shop on Main Street. This is the fourth, uh, they were the third, we had the fourth one that's on the list, but we've had four businesses open on Main Street in the last month. Um, I had a meeting with the city administrator, um, I appreciate those meetings, those usually happen at four o'clock on Mondays, so if anybody has questions or something, we could field those then. I also got to meet with staff, I appreciate that, we have wonderful staff. And, um, they need to be commended in the, in their efforts of what they do for the city. I went to a citizen's house about that stop sign and, um, that stop sign is, uh, down in the terrace and we're at another meeting with him again today, he's a little bit agitated. He wants to get a, um, lit sign or something and so, um, I and Kyle and, and Brian are all, are all working on something to stop that traffic that's flowing down Monroe from, uh, Majors and it's the first stop sign that we, that we hit, a lot of traffic's going through that. The police are there, the next complaints that we're gonna have are too many tickets being passed out. There can't be an even medium, but, uh, that sign, and I don't know that people can see it, but one lit sign, solar divide, solar system on that that, that runs LED lights is one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And so, um, Kyle's bringing up the location on the map and, um.
They've got one like that in Chishonee.
And they've got one just like it on, uh, Rendezvous Road where Rendezvous hits the main highway, we're just outside of Hudson.
Yep.
And so, um, there's a lot of four-way stops in town that would like that same sign, so we'll have to just make, uh, the traffic comes in from the west and one of the greater offenders and, and they're doing their job or the, this is en route to and from the county sheriff's off, office. And so they get, the sheriff gets going down that road pretty fast. So, um, that's where they're asking for that location if, if, um, that citizen's talking to any of you guys. And, um, Kyle was spot on. He, he was saying that if you put four of these on that intersection, you can get, you can spend over four thousand dollars. So, um, maybe we can go back and, and maybe counsel if you wanted to, we could have a, put a sign. That's, uh, Ryan Park's parking lot right there across from the school. And we could put a, we could put a, um, prepare to stop, uh, sign there, maybe even, um, red flashing light or something. The problem with that is it needs electricity or it needs solar vision and that's, that's gonna make it expensive. But that's, that's what that question is about, so. Your honor, I would assume the most of the offenders are going back and forth on Monroe, not the other direction. Yeah, all of the, all of the runs are going through east to west and mostly from the west, not the east. But there's some action on the east and Monroe is a pretty heavy traveled.
Yeah, it's a little busy street.
Busy street and so we have the same kinda problem down at Broadway in Monroe, where you drop off that little hill and that gets to be a spot that's hard to see, so maybe if we could make these work. Dean said maybe he could make some down at the, the Traveling Computers location for sixteen hundred dollars, he thought he could get one. We'll see what we can do there, though. We also had a meeting, Kristen was able to attend and so was Kyle, the liquor license holders came in. Um, that was a meeting that was asked for by the DUI Task Force and, um, it was concerning safe rides home from bars. And only to find out that most of our bars already offer that service in one shape or the other and they usually pay for it out of their own pocket. And then one bar pays as much as six hundred dollars last month for taxi rides away from his location. And so if we can put something there, the reason they have that conversation is that, uh, W R T A received a grant for twenty-eight thousand dollars to possibly do buses for, on big activities, so like the Brew Fest over in Lander. And they can, they can transport people back and forth without bringing their cars to that, so. Um, that was the question that we were asking, is there a way to amend that? We also had another kind of unordinary opportunity and that was a screening for Yesers. It was a documentary about World War Two, a gentleman who was, um, captured in, uh, France and spent, uh, six months in, uh, in, uh, B O W camp and, and that was done right at the Acme and, um, fully, the place was full. And, uh, some of the college classes gave extra credit if they showed up and, and that was really good, really well done. And, and the two documentary, um, artists were out of Rock Springs, they were, uh, his grandson and, and, uh, his wife. And so I appreciate the effort and that was paid for by, uh, the Berry Films, um, Berry Theaters. Um, there was no charge for that and they only made, um, their, their funds off of, uh, the, um, popcorn and pop and, uh, PBS paid for the majority of that, so it was, it was well done. Um, I did get another opportunity to, from a citizen that called us about Washington Street and, and, um, the unlawful things that were happening there and I called, um, captain and, um, he helped me with that and we dispatched people to take care of that and, and that worked out really good. And, um, we had one disappointing things and most people have already seen that and, and, um, outdoor, uh, Wyoming Outdoor Exchange is gonna close their doors. In conjunction with that call from that citizen, they gave us a lead on, um, an individual that was seen in that video and I don't know that that helped us, but, um, captain called back that same day and said we had the suspect in custody.
Your honor, that's correct, we arrested him.
And so that's a, we also have some good news that, um, the chief gave me today that we've had a string of vandalism through the city and, um, we had a concerned mother that turned in her own sons on that and, uh, the county prosecutor was, uh, kind enough to jail them in the Lander jail, is that right? And so we have them in custody and, uh, we got a lot of good information out of it, I understand, so appreciate that. There was a Neighborhood Watch meeting that I attended and, um, that is something that we're trying to get to grow and so when you're talking to constituents, uh, we need, we need more captains on that team to make that get bigger. And we really wanna keep it kinda local to three or four blocks, so people actually know their neighbors and I think that's the secret to Neighborhood Watch is to not try to make it citywide, but truly a neighborhood area. We had a ribbon cutting for Dela Rose up and their store is in the old Domino's Pizza, which is just by Smith's. And so I'd, I would ask you to frequent that and, and enjoy what they have, really pretty nice stuff, enjoyed that being there myself. I didn't try anything on, I didn't look that good in the dresses. I appreciate the paperwork that was sent out to all of us, I believe eighty-eight pages in the weekly was sent out and taxed me to pieces to get through it, so, um, I hope the rest of you did a better job. Kyle and I and the chief had a meeting with the Riverton, uh, Peace Mission, uh, Monday at ten, that lasted till noon. And, um, a lot of good information was shared there and I, I think, um, both sides got their points across. We also went that same day out to the Chishonee Council, uh, Kyle and I and I think we did a good job there too, don't you? It was worth our drive and so, um, once again, today I had a meeting with that same citizen over that sign and they want something done post haste. And, um, we would like to do that, but my, government moves fairly slow, has been my experience. I wanted concrete on federal and it's only taken four years. So we'll have to see what we can do to make that happen a little faster. With all that said, this has been a wonderful two weeks to express my appreciation for the city staff and for them coming out of their, uh, they, you guys could've really sat back and no one directed you to go get those weeds cut or to move that traffic trailer or to put those officers in that lo- location. And I think the complaints that came in last week were a hundred percent addressed and I really appreciate the you guys doing that and, and I apologize that I didn't get on and, and ask you to do it, I wish I was, I wish I did. But it's nice that you stepped up and did that, so, um, I think that's just kudos to, to the staff and, and, uh, a good example of how well you do your jobs. We do have an executive session this evening on personnel and the chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel to consider the appointment, the employment, right of practice dismissal, complaint against, uh, complaint or charges against a public of officer, professional person or an employee in accordance with the Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A I I and for the purpose of considering offers and tendering wages, salaries, benefits or terms of employment during, um, negotiations in accordance with the Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A X.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, Councilwoman Borders has the second, any discussion? Councilwoman Cox has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would invite, Kyle, do you want Kristen and yourself? Kristen and Kyle to go with us.
What about the National Pet Grooming Supply Company?
The chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Bailey has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We reconvene at eight fifty-six. Do we need any action items that you want? We don't need any, so we'll move to adjourn. If there isn't a motion not to, we stand adjourned at eight fifty-seven.